It is now 1:32. We're still missing a board member, but he'll be here shortly, I'm sure. So I'm gonna go ahead and open the hearing, take care of all the regulation-type stuff before we start the testimony. So this hearing for the zoning board of appeals is for application number... Application number 2023-20. It is...the applicant is Solarstone Illinois LLC, and the request is for a conditional use permit to allow for a commercial solar energy facility. It's part of PIN number 02-29-176-005. The address is on Illinois Route 173 in Harvard, Illinois, and the property consists of approximately 47.91 acres and is located on the east side of Illinois Route 173, approximately 3,200 feet north of the intersection of Altonburg Road and Illinois Route 173 in Alden Township. The petition...before we go further, I'll let the members of the zoning board who are here now introduce themselves, starting on my left. Your name and your township, please.
Tom Juris, Coral Township.
I'm Linnea Coustra, Alden Township.
Vicki Gardner, Nunda Township.
Kurt Schnabel, Riley Township.
Jessica Beverly Door Township.
The petition has been reviewed, and the following items have been received prior to today's scheduled hearing. The publisher's certificate of publication from a newspaper is dated April 4th, 2023, and thereby meets ordinance requirements. The affidavit of posting was signed, and the date posted was April 18, 2023, and thereby meets ordinance requirements. The affidavit of mailing was signed, and the date mailed was April 4, 2023, and thereby meets ordinance requirements. The survey has been checked against the petition, the legal notice, and the publication in the newspaper, and all three match. Filing fees have been paid. The endangered species consultation has been received, and the McHenry County Soil and Water Conservation District report has been received. At this time, anyone who is going to be making a comment, asking questions, giving testimony, I will swear you in. Anyone who would like to be able to speak, please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly affirm that the testimony you give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Right.
So how the hearing works is that we will take testimony from the petitioner, and then the board can ask him questions based on his testimony, and then any members of the staff or the public can ask questions based on that testimony, what he's been given. After that, the staff will give their report, and the board will ask them questions. And then after all that's been done, if any member of the public has a comment on this petition, then you're allowed to give your comments as well. So whenever you're going to speak, I would like you to come up, if public...members of the public come up to the microphone, because this is being recorded, because we only have six people, and there's seven on the board, so someone will have to listen to the transcript. So we want to make sure that we have your name and your address, and that we get you speaking into a microphone clearly, so that the transcript will reflect what you had to say. So at this point, I will let the petitioner introduce himself, and we'll just go ahead and start, if that's okay. And otherwise, if you'd like to wait for Charlie, you can do that, too.
No, I think if everyone else is comfortable, I think I can move forward.
Yeah.
I recognize I'm the only one on the agenda, so I'm between you and everyone else getting out of here to enjoy the rest of the day. So I'll move through this quickly for you. I do under-
So if you would just first just give us your name and-
Yep, my name is Gordy Simington, and I am with Solarstone Partners. There are five principals in the business, and I am one of those principles. So I have a short PowerPoint presentation that I thought that I could take you through. It's not customized PowerPoint, but I wanted to...from conversations that I've had with Kim, she's let me know that you all are pretty up to speed on solar, so I trimmed this down considerably to the presentations that I normally make. So this particular project that we're working on is the Harvard Solar Project, is what we've termed it. We are an experienced renewable energy developer. We started in 2014 in Minnesota with three partners at that time, and I was one of those then, and we've expanded since to five, and we have 18 total employees today. We're based in Minneapolis, Minnesota, and as far as our community's solar development that we've done, we have 14 projects in Minnesota that are on the grid and delivering energy to the public utility there. And then we have two projects here in Illinois that we got in the first round with the lottery, and one of those is located in Clinton County, and the other one is in Winnebago County. And those are both operational and delivering energy to both Ameren and Comet. For 2023, we are just in the process, in the next 30 to 60 days, starting construction on five projects here in Illinois, and that is a total of 10 megawatts for us for those facilities. Three of those are in Stevenson County, and two of those are in Clinton County. We have about 30 projects that are in our development pipeline, a total of about 100 megawatts, and that's in New Mexico, which opened up their program about a year ago, and New Jersey, Wisconsin, and Pennsylvania. And then our largest project that we've constructed to date is a 10-megawatt facility in Rochester, Minnesota, and we did that in concert with the Rochester Public Utility and the Mayo Clinic. So that sits on about 130 acres. It's just east of town. There's development to the north, to the east, and to the south of that that we put that project in, and we were operational about a year ago on that. I thought I'd just bring up speed quickly on the Climate and Equitable Jobs Act. It's referred to as SEJA, and the state legislature passed that back in September of 2021, and basically what they were doing there was refunding the program so that it could get started up again after round one. Just to give you a few snippets out of it that I think are some things both for the state and for communities that's a benefit to that, but there's a $40 million grant that's included in this program. Part of it's to restore local budgets that have been battered by declining or closing fossil fuel plants, energy plants, and then they've also expanded for renewable workforce training opportunities, and then support...additional support for mental health services is included in that as well. And then there's an $80 million grant that was provided for clean energy workforce and contractor development, and that's basically in the minority communities. And I just read this morning in the paper that the city of Chicago just kicked off their sustainability hub, and that's exactly what that program is there. So obviously, things have moved quickly, and they are putting some of these things in place today. The other thing that they also have is increasing support for the electric transportation, aiming to put about a million battery-powered cars and trucks on the road by 2030 here in Illinois. And they also have solar projects that are committed to submitting in for subscriptions...excuse me. Yeah, submitting in for subscriptions incentives to provide subscriptions to lower-to-middle-income families. If you get that and a certain percentage of that onto your solar facility, then you earn more in terms of being able to score points for that, and it's a whole point system now that you put in. I think the threshold is five, and once you reach five points, then any other bonus points above that, you can do that. So you can earn additional points doing this. The permit, the interconnection application, all of those get points, too. And then anything that we have with affiliations, with local agencies, unions, and contractors, for local contractors, you give points for that as well. And then I think on a bigger stage, at the federal level, there was the Inflation Reduction Act that was passed last summer, and I think the biggest piece out of that was is that the ITC, which is the Investment Tax Credit, that got levelized starting this year at 30%, and it goes through till 2032. The other thing that they added into it, which is even a bigger piece of this, is US...any US equipment that we use, any of the equipment on site, then you can also earn up to another 50% on the ITC for that. So that incentive is being put in place for developers and for owner operators to buy, purchase manufactured US products to put in there, so you can earn more for that as well. And I think all of that just rolls up to more jobs. As far as the project overview, we have one parcel under control, and it's owned by the Fisher family. It's on...that parcel is about 48 acres, but with the technology today, with tracker technologies, which we'll be using, bifacial panels, and also the increased wattage of the panels today...or I should back up. We were here in 2018 getting permits for a couple of other projects. At that time, the panel wattage was about 330 watts. That was taken up about for 1 megawatt, about 10 acres. Today, with the tracker technology, with bifacial, and if you're not familiar with that, it's got panels underneath, too, that can pick up additional energy. And so with that, in addition to the increase in wattages, wattage today is probably up around 550, 550 to 590, depending on the manufacturer. So we're starting to see that we can use less and less land here to get the same amount of production that we got before. So we're looking to probably take about 26 acres here for that. The service-
Sorry to interrupt, but what did you say it was in 2018 versus now?
2018 was about 330.
Okay.
Yeah. So I think the message there is, I mean, panel technology is going to continue to proliferate and going to increase. You can already see it in the last five years. So the win-win for that is, is we can put the same amount of energy onto a smaller footprint and continue to, you know, maximize that space. As far as the service road is concerned, we need that access point off of Route 173. There is an existing cart path that they're using there today to get ag equipment on and off the parcel there, so we would be taking advantage of that. Our point of interconnection for this project would be on the west side of Route 173, and we would be interconnected to that three-phase line there. And then the other thing that we've done here to be in compliance with the ordinance from a screening standpoint, from any residential areas, we're about 500 feet or more away from the design that we put in place for that. The other thing that I'd like to show here, I don't think I can get my cursor on it, but this is...we've actually used some drone photography over the years to help give some orientation to what something would look like from a distance standpoint. So just on the horizon there, that is our solar facility for the one that you saw on the cover page that I had, our big light facility. That happens to be a potato field, so as opposed to a cornfield, so we could get a little bit better shot. But this is 500 feet, from about 5 to 10 feet above ground. You can see there, and just on the horizon there is the facility, Continuing on the project overview, we will be required to put some vegetated screening along Route 173. So there is some vegetation there today, so we'll be taking advantage of that, but where there are gaps in it, we will be filling that out, and you can see that on our plan as well. And then just some things on the solar panels themselves, just quick bullet points here, but as I mentioned before, we're using bifacial trackers. Height, full tilt, is probably going to be 10 to 12 feet, could be lower. Depends on what we find as far as some of the geotech work that we do and the substrate that we have to work with. We have an eight-foot cyclone fence that would be encompassing the entire facility. That is for insurance and security purposes. There is no concrete or asphalt on the facility. We do have a concrete pad that we will put down for our...some of our equipment are transformers that we have, but that's above ground. But we don't use any concrete or asphalt on the facility. Everything would be planted with native prairie grasses. We'd work with staff on that, make sure we're not introducing any invasive species for that. And then we also do a pollinator-friendly plantings that we do. The turf that we have, there's about 15 to 18 feet spacing in between, so we're trying to create a strong turf so that the vehicles after construction, where they're usually light-duty service trucks that come in a couple times a month to do weeds, mow maybe three or four times a year, and for maintenance. So they're driving on that, so we just want to make sure we have a strong turf and we're not creating any erosion issues. Some of the permitting requirements that we saw that came back from staff that we would need to do before we pull the building permit is we would have to have a drain tile survey done. We have been told by the landowner that there isn't any drain tile on site, but staff's recommended that we go ahead and have that survey done, and that's also all part of the AMA agreement, which I'm sure you are all acutely aware of as well. So...and then there's also a decommissioning plan and a bond that we would need to put into place before we're able to pull that building permit, and then we would also need to access a permit...access permit from the Illinois Department of Transportation. Key benefits, at least for the county anyway, is the opportunity for increased property tax revenue. We think it's clean, safe, renewable energy. A 5-megawatt facility on an annual basis could handle about 1,000 homes on a yearly basis. It's also, we think, got some energy resilience for the local power grid. You may recall when the Ian Hurricane hit Fort Myers last year, the folks in that area were without power in most cases for two to three weeks. There is a development that is about 10 to 15 miles east of Fort Myers, and it's called Babcock Ranch. And it's got a...it's kind of a...it's a self-contained area. It has a 75-megawatt facility on it, and after the storm came through, they were back up the next day with power and with the internet service. So when we see some of these facilities like we have, and they're on the grid, and they're delivering energy to that substation, there may be other things that are down, but it can bring back that resiliency much sooner than if you were with traditional production. It's quiet...we think it's a quiet neighborhood. There's no lights, no noise, low traffic impacts, as I mentioned. There's probably going to be service people coming in a couple times a month to review, make sure everything is running properly. And then we also would be advocating and looking for...that's how we're scoring these projects, for local labor construction, and also long-term maintenance OEMs that we have to sign up to for the maintenance on the facilities. So just to give you an orientation here, my kids can't say this...a bird's-eye view, but this is a drones, I guess, more appropriate view of this, but this is the actual parcel that we are looking to develop. And then this is the preliminary development plan that we provided in our application. So 173 is on the left-hand side there. That's our access point coming off of that cart path. And then as we come in, there's a hammerhead inside the fence there, and then that's where our pad would be for our transformer that we would have that steps up the voltage after it leaves the facility, and it's fully enclosed with that eight-foot cyclone fence. And over on 173 there, the lighter green that you see there, that's where we would be filling in the gaps with the...whatever staff is recommending that's consistent with that area there to provide additional screening. So with that, that concludes my presentation. Applause.
Can you...there's some standards for amendment for a conditional use permit in the ordinance, and I would like you to address those. I don't see those in our staff report.
I just was informed that we're adding those now, so if you want to give me the HDMI, I can hook it up, and I've got them on my screen here, if you're finished with that.
Thank you. And some of these are specific for a solar farm, and you probably covered a lot of them through your presentation, but any of those that you haven't, specific to the solar farm, and then also the general conditions that need to be addressed for us to approve a conditional use request. Kim will put those up. Okay, these are the general conditions. If you just want to try to walk through those and address each of those, please.
Starting with number one?
Yes, one would be the standards for the solar farm, and maybe you can address those after this, but if you could just start with two, and then you can look at those...Kim will put up a screen with those other use standards.
Yeah, first, number two, the site shall be so situated that proposed use is compatible with existing and planned future development of the area. I think I mentioned earlier with all the setbacks we have that were-
Is your mic on?
She said it was.
Yeah, just put it up here.
You know, in our compliance with the setbacks that we have from adjacent landowners there, we've exceeded those requirements in addition to the screening at the 500-foot. In most cases, it's more than that, so. And it's basically the north and south that we had those issues with that. Then the establishment maintenance and operation shall be detrimental to or endanger the public's safety, health, comfort, or general welfare of the neighborhood. I think, you know, back to what I was talking about, you know, we do have an O&amp;M, an operations and maintenance, contracts that we have to sign and get in place, and that all requires us for maintaining the facility, and weed control. And we do come in three or four times a year to do mowing and then maintaining the actual panels. We can remotely monitor the panels. We can tell...we don't necess...we can tell in general where we're getting a reduction in productivity, and so then we can go in and check those for that. But we don't believe that there's anything that would endanger any of those others that you have listed up there with this facility. Conditional use should not be injurious to the use enjoyment of property in the immediate vicinity. Again, it's all self-contained. It's a quiet neighbor. There's no lights, and we wouldn't consider that to be detrimental to that condition there. I think on that, conditional use does not substantially diminish or impair property value within the neighborhood. There's not a lot of empirical evidence about that, since it's relatively new. I can tell you that in our state, there is a county, Shisago County, and Shisago County has 150 megawatts of solar energy in that that they permitted in that county. They are considered the king of solar in the state with that level. Their county assessor back in 2018, because the constituents were getting concerned about the number of solar facilities that were going up, and they were concerned about their property values. So Mr. Keefe, the county assessor, did an analysis of that for about two years, and I have that study. I'd be happy to provide that back to staff if you'd like to see that at some point. But the general consensus from that was, is that there was less than 1% change between the assessed value of the home and the sale value of the home. So they use that and continue to use that as support for what they're doing. Obviously, they settled down, and the dust has settled with what they permitted. They're not doing as much, but that's what they were doing to begin with. The other thing that I would point to is Stevenson County in October just had a study done by a company called Cone Resnick, who are a real estate evaluation company that are headquartered in Chicago, and they came back with a conclusion, the county did, after the analysis was done, that there wasn't any negative impacts from that. So I have the minutes and the notes from that, too. I can share that with anybody if you'd like to see that. So I think that answered that question. Adequate utilities, access, drainage, and otherness have been or are being provided. Yes, I think we've done that as far as, at least at this point anyway, talking to you about our access roads. We would be...with our civil engineering work that we do, if we're fortunate enough to be able to get a conditional use permit here, then we would start all of our civil engineering and designing for that, and that's all the hydrology, that's all the grading. I can assure you that once this facility goes in, the last thing that we want to have a problem with is drainage. And so even if there was drain tile on the facility, we'll do a couple things. We may come in, because the facility's going to be there for 35 to 45 years, we may come in and decide that that drain tile isn't going to last that long, and we'll come in and upgrade that because we don't want those issues or creating those for homeowners, residents downstream from that. Number seven, the adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide ingress/egress. Again, I think with that, we are looking to utilize that existing cart path that's there, but understand that we would need to get an access point with the county to get that permit for that. Number eight...I believe so. Yep. And all of the conform...applicable regulations of the zoning district, which it's located in Ag 1, so I think we satisfied that. Number nine, conditional use is reasonably in the interest of public welfare. I think so, too, and I think that was one of the things that I was outlining with some of the things that are contained in the SEJA Act. And I think there's...Illinois is way out in front of everyone else. In fact, I will tell you that the New Mexico program is...they didn't create much down there. The state legislature, it looks to us like they pretty much borrowed what was being done up here and the learning curve that the state of Illinois went through, starting in 2018, and taking advantage of that. So they are doing the same thing by putting more requirements on the developers and the owner operators to create these environments for workforce training, for low-middle-income families to be able to participate in these things, and also the reinforcement back to these communities that have fossil-fuel-based economies, and trying to make sure that they're known whenever they can to transition them into the new renewable energy sector. Number 10, the adequate measures to be taken to provide protection to groundwater recharge and the groundwater quality. Yeah, I think that's something we've provided some preliminary information to staff on, but again, that would get back to, you know, our completed civil engineering that we would be doing on the project before we even started construction.
It's going to take me just a moment. We have a red-line version that just passed through the county board for this section of the ordinance because it was modified to be in compliance with the state's new laws, so I'm just going to pull up.
Are you in that? Well, our application came in before that, though, right? Are you in compliance now with HB 4412?
Yes.
Oh, you are?
We are. Your application came in...what was the date of that? I think it was after, because January 27th was the date that it passed.
So you're adhering to the 150-foot setback on that?
Yes, that's correct. Okay, so here's the principal use standards for commercial solar energy facilities, as was just approved, though. I lost me.
Well, she's bringing that up. Can I just ask you, so the subscription to lowering middle-income families to get more points, how is that determined? I mean, do they have to submit some type of-
Yes. Yes, we would have to submit in before we started what percentage of the solar garden would represent that. So and the higher your percentage is, the more points you would get. So in some cases, it could be as high as 50% on that, that they would be able to participate. So there's...that capacity is reserved to make sure. And then we go out today with third-party vendors that bring on and go out and canvas the areas to make sure that that happens.
Okay. Okay, and now here we have...you don't have to read it all aloud. You can just kind of go through and say if you've addressed them.
Yes, I think on the application...on 1A, yes. We complied with that. On 1B...yep, I think we complied with that, too. Site design, or I guess C...is C part of that?
Yes.
Yes. We complied with that. Site design, 50 foot...yep, 150 feet. Of course, with this, we...you kind of...we kind of get trumped, and you and I...I asked you about that. We get trumped because you have a 500-foot setback for screening.
Right, the vegetative buffer is still required for any residences or right-of-ways within 500 feet, but you can be as close as 150 feet from any non-participating residents.
Right, but that would require you to provide screening-
Correct.
-in order to do that. So we just adhere to the 500 because we had enough room to be able to do that. So that's, what, two and a half times what the state's requiring today, at least- requiring today, at least for their setbacks from any residents. Um, no structure, power lines may exceed, uh, 20 feet in height, yep, we'd be okay with that, too. And everything that we have, uh, underground, um, everything on the facility is underground, uh, everything that we would be doing outside of that, we'll be predicated on what COMEd's requirements are. Um, but whatever, if it's overhead, though, it would be the same height as the poles that you see today that are out there, so I think we're in compliance there. Lighting, exterior lighting, uh, we do have, um, lighting, it's, uh, downcast lighting, but it's over the equipment that we have, the transformers there. Um, they also have a timer on them, uh, and they're there to allow the workers to be able, if it's dark, to be able to see. But if somebody forgets to turn off the light, there is a timer on it, so it shuts off by itself. I think they're usually set about 15 minutes, I think, is what I've normally seen. Uh, solar panels have a surface that minimizes glare, um, you know, the, I guess my answer to that would be, I think we've complied with that, I don't know how much more information you would need on that, but, uh, the panels are designed to absorb light, uh, not reflect, and we do have a reflective coating that we do put on it. I would also add, too, that the, uh, glare issues are significantly reduced with trackers. I would say that with, uh, the fixed tilt, like what was done before that just faced south, there was a tendency there, especially off of the flashing on the, um, aluminum framing, to maybe get some spot flashing off of that. But the fact that the panels now, there's no angles, it's, everything is consistent, and, uh, the sunlight is hitting directly onto the panel, so I think we've complied with that. Uh, E, yeah, everything that we've done with that, um, there's not really any tree clearing, uh, that we're going to have to do, it's not in our DNA, um, but sometimes we'll come in and do some spot, um, um, removal, but I don't see that here. We've actually kept the project over on the, um, tillable side of it, because there are some wetland areas and some, quite a bit of trees, um, to the east side of it. So, we've, we've kept out of that area there, so I think we've complied with that. Um, erosion, man, that, that would all be part of our, um, native prairie, uh, grasses, LOMO, uh, that we put in place there, so I comply with that. Fencing, we have, uh, complied with that, on G, and we've also on H complied with that as well. Yep, that's something that we would, um, have on the building permit, uh, issuance, uh, preparing the landscape and, and, and maintenance plan for that, to submit in for that, so, we've got that. And scheduled public hearing, yep, the AMI agreement, uh, that is not something yet, um, but did we put, I can't remember if we sent that, I don't think we sent that in here.
We should have a copy of it in our file, the submitted agreement, yeah.
Yeah, okay. We just, they just haven't countersigned it yet.
Right, right, which we just required prior to the permit.
So, that is something that, uh, we would have to, uh, circle back on with them, uh, to get that finalized, but that is with them, and we did execute that. So, Jay, I think we comply with that. K. Yep, we'd have to do, that's what I was talking about earlier with the Illinois Department of Transportation, so that is something we'd have to do before we could pull a building permit. Safety. Yep, that's something that we would put in place for A, as well as B. And I, I don't see it on, maybe that's your local fire, fire district, but, uh, we'll be required for E911 on this, too, right?
For, for-
E911, where we have, uh, an address.
Oh, yes, we will assign that when the building permits-
So, we, we would, we would work with that, too. Uh, damaged panels, removed, repaired, replaced within 60 days. Uh, I can just tell you, uh, unequivocally, that the best part of this, for your assurance on that, is that the solar operator and owner is, has subscribers that are on the facility. They are mandated with the agreement that they have with the utility to deliver five megawatts of energy consistently. So, and those, that energy then flips and trips the renewable energy credits that the subscribers get from COMEd in this, in this case. If for whatever reason the facility is not producing at that level, and they can't comply with that, then it is the owner-operator's responsibility to refund to the subscriber and make up that difference, it's not the utility. So, the owner-operator has skin in the game to make sure that the facility is operating at an optimal level at all times to do that, and we have, uh, the ability to be able to, to monitor, uh, remotely for that, to make sure that, uh, you know, we're, we aren't seeing any, or experiencing any, uh, loss in that. And anything else that would happen with repairs or replacements, they have a 25-year warranty on the panels, and, uh, that would trigger an insurance event, you know, if there was something else that catastrophic happened on it. Abandonment, um, I would just point back to the decommissioning plan for that, which we would have a bond in place there. Um, so I think we comply with that, too. Yeah, that's a decommissioning plan for that. Yep.
I think that's it, right?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, we'll take questions from the board, starting with my left, Mr. Germs. Do you have any questions?
Question probably more-
You need to speak into your microphone. You can handle, well, yes. Push it towards the microphone.
Now, hey. I love sun. This is within Harvard's mile-and-a-half planning jurisdiction, is it not?
Yes.
You see from the map.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, this is not a zoning change, this is strictly a conditional use permit.
Correct.
So, Harvard basically doesn't care, or do they have?
We have not received any correspondence from the city.
Did you send, of course, did you send the-
Yes, they received-
They were made aware of it?
Yes.
And they didn't respond?
Correct.
So, my only question.
Mr. Germs. Thank you. Now, you said that, uh, most of these panels will be at a height of 10 to 12 feet?
At full tilt.
Right, so that they're like this, you know, the sun's over here and they're-
Correct.
-almost standing on, okay. Now, the ones that you showed us in the picture of the potato field, is that the same height, or is that-
No, those are actually, that's actually fixed tilt, which you saw on the cover there of our Big Lake Project, um, that's fixed tilt. That was built back in 2017. Uh, the backside of those are probably 15 to 18 feet high. But I want to just qualify something, too. When I say 10 to 12 feet, that for us would be the maximum. We, uh, we don't know yet what that substrate looks like and what we may need to do, so-
Right.
So, it could be low-
Yes.
But it won't be higher.
Yes, I understand, okay. Um, and I'm assuming from what you've said so far is that this one will be connected to COMEd?
Correct.
Okay. And now you mentioned something about turf, is this turf between the panels that you're talking about?
Yeah, it's actually underneath everything.
So, you're going to have grass grown in it?
There'll be, there'll be grass grown underneath. And I would point out one other thing, too, with the fixed tilt, even though we had done that because sun wasn't getting down underneath-
Right.
-there was usually some bare areas under there that were, would pose a problem. But now with the fixed, or, excuse me, with the tracker, there's sunlight that's available there, you know, during the day, so we get full-field coverage now with that.
Okay, so does, does the grass underneath these actually help that process, the reflecting-up process, or is that just-
On the reflectivity?
Yes.
Yeah, that's a great question. Um, I get asked all the time, people say, "Well, what good does it do to have-"
I mean, grass is shinier than dirt.
Right, right, but, um, um, so, I get asked, you know, "You guys have panels underneath, what good does that do? The sun never hits it." But interestingly enough, uh, grass, gravel, sand, uh, and even dirt have reflectivity properties about 20 to 25%. The other advantage that we have up here in the northern climate is, is that when there's snow on the ground, the reflectivity on that is about 90 to 95%.
I'm not surprised, yeah.
Yeah, so, it's a bigger advantage. They don't get that in the south.
Okay, um, my other question was about lighting, but you answered that, so thank you. Mr. Schenfeld.
Yes, I believe I just have two questions right at the moment. The first one is, not very technical, have you had any contact or communications with the adjacent landowners, the property, the residential owners to the north?
We have none.
Okay. Second question is more for staff. Um, there's a residential property shown on the, uh, current land use map, just north of this project, uh, that I believe shows an A1 with a variation, it's 98-28.
Yes.
You have some ideas to what that might be all about?
Yeah, that was in 1998, it was just to allow a detached garage in their front yard.
That's all I have for now.
Thank you.
Mr. Bevan.
Thank you. Um, I really liked your memo that you submitted, it was really comprehensive and really stellar. Thank you so much for all that work you put into it.
I'll pass it along.
It was, it was great, thank you. I just have a few questions. Um, if you could go to the site plan. So, as you can imagine, we're seeing quite a few of these.
Sure.
And a question that I have generally, since you added to, um, how you really, really need 26 acres to get the five megawatts, why are the leases like 50 acres now? Um, are you using up all 50 acres with the, uh, the row spacing then, or are you only, because it looks to me like you're only using the 26?
Well, we, we are actually, for the footprint, we're actually using 26 acres for this. But at some point, I would assume, because we don't know, and we put a legal description together for this, so we're inside of that envelope that we can, we have to be mindful of the setbacks that we adhere to, but there are opportunities for us to morph if we need to, depending on if there's constraints or other things that we don't know about, that we could take care of. But there are some areas there that we are no doubt going to have to work with the landowner on, because that's going to get stranded. We call that stranded areas, that they can't use any longer. So, his eventual final lease agreement will probably be bigger than the 26 acres there that we have for the footprint, because we've stranded some areas there that he can't use any longer.
Okay, I was just wondering.
Yeah. And, 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 not to belabor that, but normally what we would do if we didn't have the setback requirements, we, as a developer, would endeavor to limit the stranded areas so that the farmer could continue to use the rest of it for whatever purposes he wanted to. But when we're working with setbacks like this, both top and bottom, and then we have the road over there, too, it, we would refer to this, it's, it's not, but we would refer to it as kind of a donut hole, where we've had to kind of put it in the middle. But then, that's more expensive for us because we're going to have to pay for that stranded areas there that we typically would try to avoid in all possible. But anyway, and I'm not, I'm not, uh, I'm not being critical of that, I was just laying out to you, those are some of the challenges that we have sometimes when we come in, you know, based on the land and the constraints around it, and then what the ordinance requirements are that we have to do.
I was just wondering, because we're starting to see in Illinois, um, more battery facilities, and I'm sure you're making space for batteries.
Yeah, you know, we just kind of started on that because, uh, Illinois just introduced, um, incentives, additional incentives, because the utilities are pushing for that, and they want that, and so there's additional incentive. We actually were thinking of doing it on this site with the batteries, but as we started to s-, get underneath it, there is a lot of things that we are going to have to bring forward and do a lot more research ourselves to make sure, but from a, particularly from a safety standpoint, and I don't know if your ordinance has even started to address-
Not currently.
Yeah.
It's in discussions right now to add that as a use, but currently it's not allowed.
Yeah, and the, and the, um, like, the, I know the fire department and the safety issues with batteries and everything that comes along with that, that that is going to be a high bar, that we are going to have to, developers are going to have to, and we're just not there yet. We, we need to do some more homework ourselves to figure out what that needs to look like. But I can tell you this, for a five, we just went through, um, with a, um, with a partner of ours to get, start to get up to speed on it, and for a five-megawatt facility, it would be about an acre, is what they're telling us, that you would need to support that. And I think part of that acre is making sure that it's not in a place that could cause, I, one of your, uh, points up there about, um, injury or injurious to that, and making sure that it's a, you know, safely, uh, constructed and maintained facility.
Excellent. And I just wanted to, to look at this one more time. So, you're going to maintain the 500-foot setbacks even though you're not required to, under our ordinance or under state law?
No, we, we are required under your ordinance to do 500-foot setbacks.
We've revised our ordinance to be consistent with the state law.
Yeah, so, um, the ordinance was actually just modified on April 18th to match what the state requires, so there is still, um, the 500-foot vegetative buffer, as you mentioned, um, but the 150-foot setback from residences is, um, in effect.
Right, but we're, as I mentioned to you, your screening ordinance trumps any of those setback distances from residents.
It just means you would need additional vegetative buffer if you were to go down-
Yeah, so we would hold to this to answer your question.
Okay, and, um, oh, I have one more point, question. Um, you mentioned turf, and then, and Ms. Gardner mentioned turf grasses. Um, in our review, in your review of our ordinances, we have consistently required, like, uh, pollinator plantings exclusively, um, and we've had really good success with that, so I would encourage you to work with our staff and our, um, our resources departments to make sure that you're adhering to the pollinator standards. And I really liked your, um, ECO-CAB report and all of your construction points.
Okay.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
I just have a few questions. Um, that county in Minnesota that with 150 megawatts, is that like an urban county or more rural?
It's rural.
It's a rural county?
Yeah, I'll give you another interesting data point. In fact, it might be something, I share it with other counties that I'm here. They were getting a lot of pushback on, um, prime ag land.
From farmers?
Yeah, yeah. And it's, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a rural agricultural area, there's pockets, just, just like you have Woodstock here, I mean, they've got some towns, you know, that have some population. They have, so they went out and did a, an analysis of that, and, uh, they had 16,000 tillable acres in the county. And if you take that 150 megawatts, that's about 1,450 acres. That's less than 1% of their tillable land. So, they use that, and it's a good, um, statistic, I think, to be able to share, because sometimes, and it looks like it's a runaway train, and then I've been out in, you know, rural communities before, and they hear what, uh, the landowner is going to be receiving for his, uh, lease payment, and down at the local cafe or wherever they hang out, the next thing you know, it's like, well, you'd have to be an idiot not to sign your land up for this. Well, the reality of it is, and this is what I spent, this is, I pared my presentation down for you guys, but when I come in and I know that it's something that's new, I take the responsibility from an education standpoint. But we have, uh, infrastructure constraints, we can't put these just anywhere. There could be a landowner that's 100 miles from here that wants to lease his land for $10 an acre. Well, we can't run an extension cord up there to plug into it, it's just not financially feasible. So, we have to be a certain distance from the three-phase line, and we have to be a certain distance from the substation. And if those parameters aren't there for us, then there's nothing there. So, there's only certain areas that this can happen in, at least today, and if you, some developers come in and want to build anyway, and they find out from the utility that the price tag, I mean, we just found out on one project in Stevenson County that it's a $23 million price tag to interconnect to their facility. They just, we, the infrastructure's there, but the substation doesn't have the capacity, and we don't know that until after we get into it farther with all the studies. So, we'll get the permitting done first, then we'll go and start work on the, our interconnection studies, but those are very expensive for us to do and to find out some of that information. So, of course, that project isn't, uh, isn't going anywhere. But that's the risk that we take, you know, with this. We try to knock off the, the stuff up front as we go along, uh, to knock down the risk for ourselves, and, uh, sometimes it just doesn't work out, so.
Also, in Stevenson County, the Cone Resnick study, I'd just really be interested to look at that. You said that you could provide that to staff.
Yeah, that's the one.
The summary of that?
Yep.
You know, I'd just like to see that for future, um, petitions that would be coming through.
What I would probably be doing with that, if it's okay with you, is I would just call the, uh, county planning administrator, Beth Hanny, and just ask Beth to get a copy of that, and then I can forward that on. Is that?
That's very great. And then, um, um, just mentioned the, like, um- And then, just mentioned the, maybe the ECO-CAB, I'm looking at the IDNR with the landings turtle, you're aware of that?
Yes.
And that one of our conditions would be that you have, you cover everything necessary to protect that landing.
Yes, understood.
Regarding this Cone Resnick report, is this, this is something I believe we saw back in twenty eighteen during some presentation, and it had the real estate values and the ups and downs of the, has that been updated since then?
I couldn't answer that for you. We did, it's Andrew Line, I think is probably who came out to do that for that one, but I was just down in Tazewell County about two months ago, and we use, Andrew came in for us there to do a presentation on that. So I don't have the one that you're talking about, but I could, I think, I could provide you the one for Tazewell County too, if you wanted to see that. I don't know if that's relative.
I don't know if it is, because I do remember one petitioner coming in and saying that people were begging them to put your solar farm right there, which amazed me. Anyway, I guess it was in there.
Yeah, they actually followed in behind. In fact, in their presentation, they used the Shisago County example in their own presentation, because it's public information, so they just took it, so they use it in for that too.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
But the thing I like about the Shisago County one, that it's not a third party. You know, it's not somebody that, you know, got hired, that brought in as a representative, it's actually a governmental entity that did that study.
Right. Thank you. Okay, at this time, staff, have any questions in the petition?
I don't have any questions, but can I read that paragraph from the state law, just for anybody that isn't aware? So for anyone that isn't aware, the state of Illinois passed new laws on January twenty-seventh of this year, basically outlining siting requirements for solar facilities. So this comes from their, from their new laws that were passed. A request for siting approval or special use permit for a commercial wind energy facility or a commercial solar energy facility, or modification of an approved siting or special use permit, shall be approved if the request is in compliance with the standards and conditions imposed in this act, the zoning ordinance adopted consistent with this code, and the conditions imposed under state and federal statutes and regulations. The county may not adopt zoning regulations that disallow permanently or temporarily commercial wind energy facilities or commercial solar energy facilities from being developed or operated in any district zone to allow agricultural or industrial uses. So I just wanted to put that on the record.
So basically, what that's saying is, as long as they meet what's required in the ordinance, we cannot, we can't say no?
Correct. And as I mentioned, our unified development ordinance has now been updated to match what the state has passed.
Is that with your approval levels, Kim? Is it a two-stage requirement for conditional use permits now too?
Well, it's the zoning board recommendation and then the county board approval, correct.
Because some other counties have three or four different levels, and they have to pair that back, so.
Does any member of the public have a question for the petitioner? Okay, come on up to the microphone, state your name and address, and then go ahead and ask your question. Do I have to turn it on?
Yes.
Okay. So push the button towards the microphone itself.
And you can. Okay. That's perfect. Can you hear me? Yes. Okay, my name is Marguerite Pelzner, my address is one-eight-six-zero-five, Illinois one, Illinois Route one-seventy-three, and I'm the middle driveway on the map, and we built the garage in ninety-eight. So that was me. Okay, so what does this fence around the facility look like?
It's a cyclone fence, black.
Black, okay, and how tall is it?
Eight feet.
Okay, so is that to keep people out?
Yes.
Okay, what about the people who go around? Okay, so I've lived here thirty-four years, and people shoot constantly there. So like, I've called the sheriff, because branches are coming down in my pasture, and I'm standing there going, who's shooting? You know, so they've come out, they haven't been able to figure out who it is, but they'll drive through that field, you know, when there's corn in it or whatever.
Yeah.
Are you guys going to have any kind of, I mean, I keep picturing like a prison. I mean, I'm not against this, because I think the soil is pretty poor, I hate being sprayed with the crop duster, you know, I hate that I see all these trees dying along a fence line, and I was telling this lady.
We have to just ask your questions.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay, okay, so is there going to be some kind of security for this facility?
That, that, there is, there are, we will have cameras that are on the facility, they're usually around like our equipment and so forth, and on the entrance there, so we can get a view of that. And those are remotely controlled as well.
And they're on twenty-four hours a day?
They are.
But they're just at the place?
They're, 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 there wouldn't be cover in the whole facility, they would just be at the equipment that is, that is probably the most dangerous, but making sure there isn't anything.
And that's in the middle of?
No, it's actually right at the road.
Oh, okay.
When you come in, right on the road there, yep.
Okay, I think that's it. Are you coming up?
My name is Linda Ballick, I live at one-zero-zero-six North Jefferson Street in Harvard. I also work at the Land Conservancy of McHenry County, we have a couple of natural sites right across one-seventy-three, the proposed facility. So let's see, a few questions. And just to clarify what you asked, you talked about turf covering everything, and then you also talked about pollinator native plants. So which is it where, how, I'm not familiar with the design. So are the pollinator plantings around the edges, or, you know?
We would, yeah, we, they would be inside on the, on the panels. Once the construction is completed, then we would be providing that low-mow native grasses and pollinator-friendly plantings there. If those other stranded areas that I was talking about, where there's nothing there, then we would be planting in there too, because we don't want to create any erosion issues.
So the turf is sort of like the aisles in between the panels?
It, yeah, because there are trackers now, it's a, it fully covers the area because of the light being able to come in, because the panels are moving, so it gets light during the day. And yeah, it would be all encompassing inside the facility there.
Okay. And then, oh, you said that you have a facility in Winnebago County?
We do.
So is it similar to this, where I could go and look at it and see, you know, how the pollinator plants and native plants are doing there?
Yeah, it's, it's down on Baxter Road, right off of Interstate thirty-nine.
Because I, I was wondering, who is responsible for monitoring? I mean, you can't just plant a prairie and you have to like nurture it and maintain it, so just mowing isn't going to do it. I mean, when we do prairies, we do burns and stuff, which isn't going to work here.
We're not going to burn.
But so, who, who is responsible for monitoring the quality of what you say is going to be there?
Yep, they had, I think you may have seen before, but the county has a requirement up there for landscaping plans, and also for our maintenance, for the vegetation and so forth. So we'd be putting a plan together, and that same plan then would be part of our service contract that we do with an O and M operator here that we would contract with to maintain the facility for us. And that would also be for weed control as well.
So is there any sort of, like, a, like, some kind of a pot of money set aside in case that what you promised is going to be there doesn't turn out? What if it's a bunch of weeds? Is there some fallback money that the county can take and put, you know, put into restoring what you said was supposed to be there?
Yeah, I think there's maybe two parts to that question. I think the first one would be, I don't, I'm, I haven't, we don't have a project, well, we don't have one yet, in, because we've got the union project too, but I'm, does the county have like a weed control division, or someone that you guys have that?
No, we, we have a water resources coordinator who basically will be going out to these sites annually, possibly twice a year. He's an expert on pollinators and, and, you know, native species, all of that, so he will be going out and monitoring all of that as well. And if anything is, is not in conformance with what is, has been approved, we would notify the applicants, and it would basically be a violation until it's corrected. So it will be monitored by staff.
And so that was, I think, the first part of your question. The second part of your question, I think, was relating to, should something happen to this facility? And oftentimes, it gets phrased when I'm in public hearings about, well, what if you go bankrupt? You know, what happens? So part of our requirement before we can pull a building permit is we are going to have to have a decommissioning plan put in place. And that decommissioning plan is going to have a security bond associated with it, and I can tell you, for a facility this size, I would guess it's probably going to be somewhere between a hundred-and-fifty thousand to two-hundred thousand. And that bond will be set aside, that the county has access to, so that if something should happen, that will take care of it. The other thing, there's two other things I would tell you, the AMA Agreement, which is the Illinois Department of Agriculture, they have a mitigation agreement that we have to sign, and that's what we were talking about earlier, we've executed that, and in there, they also require the decommissioning, and they also require a lot of things we have to do with drain tile. And the biggest thing that they require is, is that in thirty-five to forty-five years, this landowner, we just have a lease. They could decide that they don't want this facility there any longer, we have to remove it. And when we remove it, we have to put everything back in the condition that it was in when we found it.
After the thirty-five years is up?
Correct.
So is that how long the lease, this lease is?
This lease is thirty-five years plus a ten-year option for forty-five. But the landowner has an option in thirty-five years as to whether he wants to continue for another ten years, and then what he wants to do after that.
It's a long time.
It is a long time.
So who made the first contact? Did you contact the landowner, or did the?
We contacted the landowner. We do, as I mentioned before, typically what we do is in about a seven-mile radius of a substation, we will drop a mailing in, and if there's anybody that raises their hand that's interested in it, then we will approach them. There are circumstances where the land that they have isn't usable for us. As an example, if it's got, well, if that property was to, if the rest of that parcel there was all we had there, with the wetlands that are identified there, that would not be an opportunity for us there. There's just too many constraints and too many issues for us there. Sometimes it's slow, that we, it's too steep, and we can't work on that either, so it just depends.
Do you know what the plan is for the rest of that parcel then? Well?
Staying just as it is.
Okay. Is it farmed now?
Nope, it is not.
So can I ask what the lease per acre is?
That's, I'm not at liberty to discuss that. But what I would tell you is, is that typically, it's two to three times whatever they are generating revenue off of it, either themselves or as a tenant farm.
Two to three times, yeah. That's what I'm hearing from a lot of landowners.
Yep.
You make them an offer, they can't refuse.
Some of them do, but.
So it always, I, I mean, my question is, why is it always, why does it always have to be on prime farmland? I mean, probably can't answer that in this context, but let me see if I have any other questions.
I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Bevan, any other questions?
I have just one more question, and it's in line with the pollinator plantings and the reporting requirements. In your very comprehensive report that you submitted, the memo, you noted that you were going to be using the IDNR pollinator scorecard system as part of this project, and as part of that, if you could elaborate, like, when you're reporting to the IPA on everything that you're doing, like, you get all your points, and you're approved, and you get your recs, you have to report back on the success of your plantings and all of the other things that you put down on your application, correct?
Yeah, to check the box, yes, on the things that we committed to.
Right, and if you end up not satisfying the requirements of the pollinator scorecard, what would happen?
Probably get penalized.
Right, or lose your recs.
Or lose the recs.
Right, okay.
Which is, again, the nuclear option, I can assure you, because without those recs, we wouldn't be able to finance these projects, so. They have a pretty big hammer as to, you know, if we don't comply, what some of the downside would be as a result of that.
Right, it could be catastrophic if you say you're going to do something and then do not.
Yes.
Right, okay, that was all.
Okay. So at this time, we'll take testimony from the public, starting with the staff. Summarize your staff report.
Sure. I think a lot of this has been, I'll go through here. So this property is east of the city of Harvard, in a pretty rural area. If you look at the surrounding zoning here, you'll notice there's an A1 CV designation just to the south here, on the other side of that residence to the south of the subject property. That was a twenty-eighteen zoning application that you all approved for Solar Farm. They've actually just obtained their building permits, and so construction should be beginning shortly on that property. So it's definitely been approved in the area. Again, we, we've talked about the residences to the north there, and the one residence just to the south, but everything else around that area is currently being used as agriculture. Future land use designation, again, widely agricultural in the area, so the use would be consistent with that. And then I just took some photos out there, just to kind of show the view from all four sides, and then that last picture, I did want to just show the, the existing vegetation as you're looking to the south, so you can see kind of how that is, is blocked from the residents there. So I don't anticipate that that would be any kind of a, an issue for, for anybody visually from, from that site. Staff feels that everything in, that the state laws has been passed, and they would be in compliance, and we have no objections.
Any members of the board have a question for staff? Okay, this time, we'll take any statements on the part of members of the public. Again, if you want to come up, if you have an opinion that you'd like to voice, now's your opportunity to do it. Again, we ask you to limit it to three minutes, and then give your name and address.
My name is Linda Ballick, my address is ten-oh-six North Jefferson Street in Harvard. And in my job at the Land Conservancy, I'm Farm Program Manager, and mostly what I focus on is trying to figure out how the next generation of farmers is going to have the land they need to farm. Then this, the younger people are saying that land access is their number-one challenge to farming. And so, in light of that, you know, there's so many of these solar farm, I don't want to say solar farm, I hate that combination of words, solar facility, there's so many of them popping up now, and I, it creates a problem for the next generation of farmers, because it, first of all, renders the land useless for farming, for food production, which is, I mean, our farmland is our greatest gem of McHenry County. And there is something called agrivoltaics, which allows for growing food and combining it with solar power at, at the same time. So we should really, if we're thinking about solar energy, we should be thinking about agrivoltaics. Let's see, solar companies are making farmland costs unattainable for farmers, especially young farmers, as if it isn't already out of the ballpark for people to afford to buy farmland these days. But when solar companies are making landowners offers they can't refuse, and, and just, it's like, be more, more competition for the young farmers, and jacking up the prices even more. And why, why do we always look at farmland as vacant land? Let's just like dump whatever we want to on the farmland. I don't think we really have understood the importance of, of farmland. I don't think we really have understood the importance of, of farmland in McHenry County, and I think we should value it a lot more and, and treasure it and save it for the next generation. Thank you.
Anyone else want to make a statement? Okay. Do you have a closing statement, sir?
No, I, I guess, you know, I think we have a, I think we have a really good project here, and I listed all the other things and the benefits, I think, that come along with that, and we're excited to potentially have the opportunity to bring it forward. And I appreciate your attention today too, and timely questions.
Okay, we only have five people here to vote if we were gonna vote today, and you'd need five for a recommendation to the county board. But, so I give you the opportunity, if you want us to take a vote today, if you want us to delay it to another hearing date...
Are you saying that you have five as a quorum today?
Our quorum is four. Our quorum is four, but...
Five positive votes.
Five positive votes to go to the county board with a recommendation.
Yeah, I'd be comfortable with that.
So at this time, we'll close the testimony part of the hearing, and we'll open it back up for the voting section. The first thing I will do is go through the, again, this is a voting meeting on petition 2023-020. The applicant is Solarstone Illinois LLC, and the request is for a conditional use permit to allow for a commercial solar energy facility. The address is, is on Illinois Route 173 in Harvard, Illinois. Forty-seven point nine one acres, located approximately 3,200 feet north of the intersection of Altonburg Road and Illinois Route 173 in Alton Township. And the PIN number is 02-29-176-005. First thing we'll do is go through the conditions proposed by, by staff for consideration. Number one, the conditional use shall have no time limit unless the use is abandoned as specified in 16.56.030.PP.4 of the McHenry County Unified Development Ordinance. Number two, the site development shall be in substantial conformance with the site plan prepared by WSB Incorporated and dated April 14, 2023. Number three, the decommissioning plan shall be applicable in part as well as whole. If any portion of the commercial solar energy facility ceases to perform its intended function for more than 12 consecutive months, that portion of the facility shall be decommissioned in compliance with all the terms of the decommissioning plan. Number four, a McHenry County stormwater management permit shall be secured prior to construction. Any damaged drainage tiles shall be repaired at the expense of the petitioner and in a manner satisfactory to the Water Resources Division Manager. Number five, a detailed landscape plan illustrating compliance with required landscape screening standards shall be approved by the zoning enforcement officer prior to issuance of a construction building permit. Number six, fencing shall be provided in compliance with the National Electric Code as applicable. The use of barbed wire is prohibited. Setting fence posts in concrete is prohibited except for gate posts and where otherwise required for stability. Number seven, prior to construction, the operator shall enter into an Agricultural Impact Mitigation Agreement with the Illinois Department of Agriculture as required by the Renewable Energy Facilities Agricultural Impact Mitigation Act 505 ILCS 147. Number eight, all recommendations of the Illinois Department of Natural Resources with regards to blending turtles, as outlined in their March 6, 2023 ECOCAT review, number 2310909, shall be followed. Number nine, all requirements of the McHenry County Unified Development Ordinance, number 16.56.030.PP., as amended, subject to State of Illinois Public Act 102-1123, shall be met or exceeded unless specifically amended by this conditional use permit. Number 10, all other federal, state, and local laws shall be met. Are there any other proposed conditions? It's been moved that we accept the conditions as stated. Okay, it's been moved by Ms. Eldridge. Do we have a second?
Uh, Ms. Gardner?
Uh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at Eldridge. Sorry. It's been moved by Ms. Gardner, seconded by Mr. Schnabel, to approve the conditions. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay, so that goes aye for Gardner. Okay, so the conditions have been approved. At this point, I would take a motion to approve the conditional use request. So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Ms. Gardner, and seconded, and seconded by Mr. Schnabel.
Keep it easy.
Yeah, discussion, Ms. Gardner.
This is a site on 173, it yet has an address, does have a PIN number, it will have an address eventually. This is a 47.91-acre site, approximately 26 of which will be used for the panels. This has been presented by Solarstone Illinois LLC, and this looks to me to be a suitable site for a solar facility. It's not really near anything. It is using a, a piece of farmland, that this is true, but it is using a piece of farmland that also has a piece attached to it that is unusable for farming or solar panels or anything else. And I think that that is, is commendable itself. These projects, as you are aware, are going to be going up. They are much more suitable than, I think, wind farms or nuclear plants, much easier to take nearby. This will be supplying electricity for a large portion of people and to combat, which we're all familiar with. And I believe that all the standards have been met and that this should be approved.
Mr. Jurors?
I want to commend the applicant. He did a very good and thorough presentation. Seen lots of these, and I'm familiar with Chicago County. I've crisscrossed it. I was agent for IPS Solar up there in Minneapolis.
Okay.
So I've seen dozens of the ones in Chicago County. So you're following some good guidelines. Of this 84-acre site here, I just did some quick math on a little calculator here. Apparently 27% of the site, of site is going under solar panels, which is kind of a small percentage. The great majority of it is gonna stay green. And I, I like the setback of Highway 173. I like streetscape. When you're, you wanna feel like you're in the country when you're driving through a country road. I like this. I wish we could do that with cellular towers. We'll work on that later on, right? I'm in favor of it, yes.
Mr. Schnabel?
Just like to make a comment before I indicate my persuasion on this vote. Just to the member, one member of the audience that made the comment about putting the solar gardens, farms, people do abhor some of those names for these projects. I just want you to understand, it's not up to McHenry County to decide if we're gonna do this or not. It's up to the state of Illinois. They're the ones mandating these projects. So if it makes you that upset, you really need to take it up to the legislators down in Springfield. In the meantime, as of January, we're more or less under orders if the project meets the requirements, and we see no other great impediments to a certain project versus a different project. We are designed here as a body to make that type of a project move forward per the state requirements. This project in particular, I believe, does it better than many of them that we have reviewed here. Mr. Jurors indicated the setbacks are fantastic on this one. No one's going to be suffering from industrial view. Cyclone fences there regardless, because that's National Electric Code as well as security. If you're gonna do this, you have to have it. So on those issues, I don't see any problems, and for that particular reason, I'm willing to support this petition.
Thank you. I also support this petition. The 133-page report that was included in our packet was very detailed. It went above and beyond IDNR and ECOCAT requirements for wildlife trans-through. They're taking on land that is not used for farming, and I assume that's under your O and M agreement as part of the lease. So if anything, this land will be improved by the introduction of native pollinator species. There are, they're monitoring through our Water Resources Division and through the state, and I, I wish that we could send this to the other applicants for solar farms, because this was a really comprehensive and well-done application. Thank you.
And I agree with my colleagues. I think this is a well-done application. It meets the standards that we are required to review for the state. This is something that preserves these soils for, you know, 40 years down the line if there's all development around here. This can be pulled out and can still be used for producing food at that time. And in the meantime, it's producing energy. So I'm in favor of the request, so at this time, I will call for the vote. Ms. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Schnabel?
Yes.
Ms. Beverly?
Yes.
Mr. Jurors?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so this goes to the county board for the five to zero recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your support.